Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started. Welcome. Is everybody here? We are looking for one more council member, but we're going to get started because we know that John will be here. But for the record, this is the notice of a special meeting. It's Tuesday, February 24, 2015, at the Veterans Memorial Hall. It's 4:30. And welcome. For the record, we do have a quorum. All council members are present. Thank you very much. And this is a special meeting and study session to review the preliminary recommendations for our water and sewer rates. And I will turn this over to Mr. Buckingham for opening.
Who wants to filibuster for a little bit, because is our presenter here yet?
Our presenter is not here.
Okay. And so, interestingly enough, okay, so I was anxious to get things rolling, and we have our consultant that will be here. So with that, we'll open, and I guess we'll go right into a short recess, unless you have some things you want to get, start getting going on.
No, I need to check on, make sure that there's, we spoke yesterday, and confirm the meeting time, and just make sure there's something that hasn't happened.
Okay. And then, you know, maybe we could just go over there. After you confirm that, we can just go over the staff report without the formal presentation.
Sure.
And talk to the folks that are here. So while you're checking, I'll just go through this. So we do have a study session. This is the preliminary recommendations for our water and sewer rates. We have a staff report by Mr. Leibig, and we have a consultant that may or may not be here. But this is an opportunity for us to just concentrate on just the water and wastewater rate structure. We've gone through a couple of meetings publicly with our Public Works Advisory Boards. Thank you. I see Marlis is out there. Thanks for chairing and your participation on that. And we do have a couple folks out in the audience, but it's kind of thin. And maybe Mr. Buckingham, I can have you speak to this item a little bit.
I was just going to suggest we could go to public comment, if you'd like to do that.
Sure. And without any kind of presentation going on, there's, you know, we're just speaking to the agenda item without any formal presentation. But certainly, I can't open it up for public comment. Anybody who would wish to speak to our water rate study staff report at this time, public comment is open. And with that, we have no public comment. We'll bring it back to council. And for those, for the viewing audience, we opened our meeting at 4:30. We were expecting our consultant here that was going to be doing the formal presentation. And we're confirming that our consultant is on the way. So with that, since we really don't have much more to consult with on this, we'll just take a five-minute recess and confirm whether or not we have our consultant onboard. So AGP, if we could just take a five-minute recess, we'll be right back. Thanks. right. Welcome back, everybody. We're live at the Vets Hall, and we are here for our study session, which is to review the preliminary recommendations for our water and sewer rates. And everybody is here. We have a quorum. Council members are present. Meeting is open. And Rob, would you like to open up for us, please?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and I apologize for having that little glitch at the very beginning. But everything looks fine now.
We're good. Yeah.
So, as you said, this is to review, a study session to review water and sewer rates. We haven't looked at water rates since the mid-'90s. And sewer rates, we last looked upon and had a rate increase in 2007. This item has been to our Public Works Advisory Board and presented as an informational item at our Water Reclamation Facility Citizens' Advisory Committee meeting. We received input at our Public Works Advisory Board at their meeting in January. Alex Handlers from Bartle Wells, who's here to give the presentation, took those comments back to his offices, crunched some numbers, came up with some alternative rate scenarios. And the Public Works Advisory Board made recommendations based on those scenarios, selecting the alternative for water, which modified the space in between the tiers a little bit. And Alex will go over those details. You know, a couple important points that we probably should look at today is that water rates, we're in a 900,000-plus deficit this year, taking water, taking money out of our capital reserve to pay for capital projects and ongoing operating expenses. And then, we're also upside down on our debt covenants for the CCWA water bonds that we have. So in order to become right with that, there's a rather proposed steep increase in the first year, and then it more levels off in years two through five. Wastewater rates, we did do a rate increase in 2007. Therefore, we're on our way to covering project costs. We just need to make a course correction and make sure that we cover those for this project that we're now, Water Reclamation Facility project that we're proposing to be cited at Rancho Colina. I think I'll end it at that. I did have another thought, but it left my brain. So I--
We'll bring it back to you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sure we'll get all the comments on there.
Right now, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Handlers to go through the rate study and questions. And then, we'll be bringing this back to you for, in about a month, for final adoption. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leibig.
Thank you. My apologies for running a little late here. I'm going to cover this, I'll try to walk through it relatively quickly. I know some of you have heard this before. So sorry if it gets a little redundant. But first, I'll talk about the water.
If you wouldn't mind introducing yourself for the viewers, please. Thanks.
Yes. My name is Alex Handlers. I'm with the firm Bartle Wells Associates. Our firm specializes in water and wastewater rates and finance. We've worked for over 500 agencies in California. The firm's been around for about 50 years. And in recent years, we've done a lot of work here on the central coast as well.
Great. Thank you.
In terms of what we did, I'll go over that in a second. But really, the purpose of today's meeting, present to the council for input, kind of the draft findings and recommendations that have come out of the process so far, incorporating some of the input from the Public Works Advisory Committee and a lot of the work we've done and working with staff. And the goal is to, you know, get council buy-in, input. We can make modifications as needed, but the goal is to keep the process rolling. You have to go through a Prop 218 process to adopt rate increases. So you're really not taking any action until that Prop 218 rate hearing at the end of the line. We just want to make sure that everyone's comfortable with the numbers that are going to be going into those notices, because at some point, you will be having to take action on them. Real quick background, you've got about 5,400 accounts here in Morro Bay. Most of them are residential. Obviously, you have a lot of tourism-based commercial and local commercial as well. Key thing is your water and sewer enterprises are enterprise funds. They're operated as independent businesses. They don't rely on any general fund subsidies to operate. They've got to cover their own cost of service. Rates are the prime revenue source, generating, I believe, is about 98% of all the revenues for both water and wastewater. So you've got to make sure that your rates are adequate to fund all the costs of service and everything you need to do. They're really the underpinning for your entire financial stewardship of those enterprises. You know both water and wastewater are facing some pretty substantial financial challenges, and it's going to require pretty significant rate increases, which is always comfortable for communities to do. What did we do? We developed 10-year financial projections, tried to build in all the latest and greatest information on the operating side, on the capital side. We tried to err a little on the conservative side in our projections, understanding you never have a perfect crystal ball. So it's hard to know what's really coming down the line, you know, four, five, six years. But we tried to be a little conservative, come up with where we think your finances need to go. And within that, took a look at your, you know, recent history of water and sewer billing data, and tried to come up with some rate structure recommendations that support the financial needs in a reasonable, reasonably fair approach. We also are updating your connection fees. We're not presenting that tonight, but I do have some draft numbers. And Rob already mentioned, we kind of worked with the Public Works Advisory Board a couple of times. They, great that you have a committee like that. I like when agencies do. You had real good folks. They had a lot of good input and questions, and some that we're still going to be addressing as we go forward. On the water side, you know this, water rates haven't been touched in about 20 years. You factor in inflation. Rates are 36% lower than they were back in the early '90s. People are also using less water now. So the typical customer, in real dollar terms, is probably paying 40% to 50% less than what they did 20 years ago. And you're still afloat, which is pretty impressive. However, you are running deficits. This year, it's about $940,000 deficit. So your water fund is starting behind the eight ball. You need catch-up immediately. Rob mentioned, you've been out of compliance with your debt coverage requirements from the Central Coast Water Authority bonds that you participate with. You have legally obligated yourself to raise rates and fees as needed to meet those debt service covenants. It's not the end of the world. You haven't met them every year. But you are supposed to be taking action to get your rates in place where you will meet those covenants going forward. So this is a history of the water rates here on this slide. Just a flat line. This is a typical bill for like a typical home here in Morro Bay, uses about six units of water per month. There are some families use a little more, some use a little bit less. But the monthly bill is $33.20 for a typical home. If you just had raised your rates by inflation, you know, roughly 3% all these years, your rates would almost be double where they are now. So generally, we're recommending agencies, we prefer the slow study approach. And it also means you would have collected a lot more revenues over the years, but you probably didn't need it. And I know there were some extenuating circumstances. You had some bond debt service that fell away back around 2000 that enabled you to continue on with your existing rates. But that's a long time to go without rate increases. I don't recommend continuing to do that in the future. Here's how you compare to other agencies with what a typical home pays using six units of water. You're kind of on the lower end. This doesn't, you know, what other agencies do is almost irrelevant from my perspective, but everyone always wants to see how they compare to other agencies. So this is how you compare. Some folks are lower, and some are a lot higher. The big things that you're facing, though, with your water enterprise, there's a number of things that are driving the need for rates to increase. We already mentioned, one is the large deficit, over 900,000 this year. You can't keep going on with deficits for, you know, a few more years, or you're going to deplete your fund reserves. So when we ran the numbers, it looked like you needed just a 30% increase, just to eliminate that deficit and get back to stability. On top of that, there's been a lot of, you know, some deferred maintenance. You've got a lot of old pipelines here in the city that were put in many years ago. You've got storage tanks that are needed. You've got a lot of facilities that need to be funded, but there's not currently a revenue stream for. So that's also driving the rates. The capital program that was included in our projections, it's about 9 million of projects over the next 10 years. It's a bit front-loaded with about 6 million over five years. So you've got about 6 million storage tanks, D cell plant improvements, you're switching over to AMR meters. There may be some cost savings for some of these things, but it's a significant chunk of change. And you don't have cash in the bank to fund that, to do 6 million in the next few years. So we assume you'd have to do some sort of borrowing, such as through the California Infrastructure Economic Development Bank, some kind of subsidized funding, to help you take on the critical projects without going bankrupt. Another key challenge, obviously, like a lot of coastal communities, is your water supply. About half of your operating costs are going to the state water project, the contract costs that you pay for water. Most of those are fixed costs that don't vary based on water use, unfortunately. Well, unfortunately, the state water project water, as you look down the line, that's going to become more and more expensive in upcoming years as the Bay Delta Conservation Plan rolls forward. We're not quite there yet, but they're talking about $25 billion is a rough estimate of what's needed, including, you know, whatever it's peripheral canal or peripheral pipelines to get the water through the delta. So it's possible that your state water project costs are going to escalate significantly in upcoming years. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail about water supply, but that's something the Public Works Advisory Board had a lot of interest on, was, hey, what can you do with these different water sources to maybe wean yourself off state water project in future years? Maybe you can, maybe you can't. We don't really know at this stage. But that's something that's going to be hitting your finances over the long run. On top of that, you're doing a new wastewater treatment plan. It's going to be reclamation-ready. So what we built into the water side was kind of phase two of that project, which is a recycled water system. The cost could be in the $25 million range, are kind of the preliminary estimates. Those aren't hitting your near-term rates. This is longer-term stuff, but you want to make sure that you're moving your rates in position so you could be able to fund what you need to do down the pipeline. If you need to make a course correction, you can. But you definitely want to be taking steps in the right direction. Another thing that's hit you financially is reduced water sales. Sales are down a bit compared to where they have historically been. It saves you a tiny bit of cost on your state water project and electricity, things like that. But it also really takes a bite out of your revenues. So your revenues have been hit a bit from that. And there may be more cutbacks in the future, if you have to do some kind of emergency water cutback stage. And on top of that, inflation for water wastewater agencies is typically 4% to 5%, kind of what certain indexes show. So you need at least a few percent rate increase just to stay even, on top of everything else. And there hasn't been one in a long time. So you're being hit on a number of fronts, on your water enterprise, and you're starting below even. So that's resulting in the need for significant water rate increases. This slide here just shows kind of a history of water sales going back to 2000. And I just put a couple, you know, arbitrary lines here from, you know, 2008 to 2010. You know, compared to the last few years, water use is down about 7%. And it's down a little bit more this year as well. So it's hitting your revenues. So what we do, we come up with projections. The whole purpose is to try to build everything in there as accurately as you can, being a little conservative. Look long-term, and get your rates aimed in the right direction to fund everything you need to fund and, you know, remain financially stable. I'm just going to run through some of the assumptions, a little more detail maybe than you want here. But we based it off your budget, the projections. We added 4% ongoing operating cost escalation. We assume the state water project costs, we're going to go up at 5% a year. Maybe there'll be a little less, maybe it'll be less for a few years than more in outer years. We don't know. But we wanted to build something in to account for some of the new costs they're taking on. One of the good things that's happening is you've got some debt that you're paying to the state right now, about $750,000 a year for your share of Central Coast Water Authority water revenue bonds. There's only, after this year, there's only seven more years of payments. Then you freed up $750,000 of funding capacity. That's just about the same time when your recycled water project is going to need to be funded. So the recycled water project will kind of step in and take that over, and then add some on top of that, assuming that goes forward. For water sales, we tried to err a little on the conservative side. So we came up with a number that was 98% of your two-year historical average. And we assumed people would continue to cut back in response to rate increases. It's known as elasticity. We assumed a 1.5% cutback in water sales for every 10% in rate increases, which is kind of along the line where various studies show elasticity is. Here in Morro Bay, people have already cut back quite a lot. So I don't know how much more they can cut back easily. But I've been surprised at other agencies with low water use, when they go through tough times, people have been able to cut back pretty significantly. So I don't think that's out of line. Capital project costs, we assumed a 3% construction cost inflation. As I mentioned, you don't have enough money to do the critical capital needs that the water enterprise is hoping to do in the next few years. So we assumed a financing of $3.5 million to tackle some of those projects. No one's going to give you money until your rates are in place, obviously, to secure the repayment. But we were assuming, in our projections, like a 15-year bank loan, that's what all banks typically like to go out these days. But I think the hopes are you can get some sort of subsidized financing. So I know the city is going to be looking into that. State does have some programs that are kind of the equivalent of getting partial grant financing. We assumed that 25 million recycled water project wouldn't kick in until, you know, around 2021. So that's outside the five-year range. It's not really impacting near-term rates. But the good news is the rate increases that we're proposing for these five years put you in position where you could handle a project like that without too much additional rate increases in the long run. And also, if that recycled water project does come online, you're going to have some operating costs associated with that. But again, this is in the outer years, so it's not impacting the near-term needs. This slide here shows kind of graphically the projections of your expenditures. I think a couple of things we note, obviously, there's cost escalation for your own operating costs in blue, and for the state water contract costs in green. The yellow is the, your share of CCWA debt service that goes away after seven more years. But you can see how that's going to be replaced by an increase. This orange is new debt service that would kick in in the outer years to more than supplement that. And the purple is pay-as-you-go capital. But the rates we're proposing are pretty much tracking the expenditures. So it's pretty much a cost-of-service approach that we're taking. However, because of the nature that your wastewater enterprise is in right now, where you're behind, you're in deficit mode, you need to recover, and you need to meet your debt service coverage. That requires a bigger bump up year one. So it couldn't be an even phase in every year. That's why we're recommending, you know, like a 40% to 50% rate increase right out of the gate, after 20 years of no rate increases. Then the rates over the next few years would be phased in, not exactly evenly, but, you know, kind of taking smaller steps after that initial This is a breakout of your current water rate structure, just to move on to what your rate structure looks like. People pay a fixed monthly charge of $16.43. When that charge was developed, it wasn't meant to be a separate fixed charge. It was meant to be the charge for the first three units of water. So initially, I thought this was a fixed charge, plus, you know, you had included three units of water for free. Then people start to pay. But I have been corrected, that that $16.43 represents the charge for three units of water. From my perspective, it doesn't, you know, it almost doesn't matter what you want to call it. The bottom line is you pay a pretty low fixed charge. Your fixed expenses are certainly a lot higher than that. And people don't pay anything for the first, they get the next three units of water for no additional cost, once they pay that $16.43. Then your rates start going up. For every single unit of water, it's a few extra cents. It goes from $5.56 up to $13.86 by the time someone gets out, it's almost 1,000 units of water. So fixed charge and escalating variable charges, but nothing paid in here. You can see, if you're a low-water user, you're getting a pretty good deal here in Morro Bay. If you use three units or less, you're just paying a little over $16 a month, which is pretty darn low, considering that accounts for about 30% to 35% of your water use. And you do have a lot of customers who stay within that range. And you have a lot of water supply needs here in Morro Bay as well. So a few of the observations we had from that are, you know, I just mentioned, your fixed charge generates about 30% of your total revenue requirement. That's nowhere near what your fixed costs are on the water enterprise. But that's pretty common for water agencies to have a fixed charge in the 25% to 35% range. That way, there's a significant amount of revenue recovery on the variable side, which in turn is what helps generate water conservation, when people have to pay, you know, higher variable costs for water. I already mentioned, too, low-use customers kind of benefit from your current rate structure pretty substantially. There's a very low fixed cost. There's no charges for the first three units of water. Even someone using, you know, four or five units of water is only paying that fixed charge, plus a couple of units in addition. Another observation is high-use customers, they're paying a lot higher usage rates than low-use customers. They're quickly moving up your inclining rate structure. But they're also paying a very low fixed cost. What's a little more common in California is to have water rates that, fixed charge varies based on meter size. So a large customer might pay a much higher fixed charge. And the variable charges for large customers, sometimes agencies use uniform rates for them. To try to move to something like that would be a huge disruption, a huge change from your current rate structure, and result in a lot more revenue recovery from your low-water users. So we weren't recommending switching over to that with water rates. There's a lot of ways of doing it. There's no, you know, perfect, correct way of doing it. A lot of it's a policy decision, and what you think is a reasonable and fair way of doing it at the end of the day, provided there's reasonable justification for that. So what we were proposing was a, kind of two things happening. One is that large increase in rates with a big bump up in year one, coupled with a transition to a four-tiered inclining rate structure, which is a lot more common, where people would buy the first three units of water at the first tier rate. Then, as they moved up to the next tier, they'd purchase water, it'd be a little bit more expensive. And as they keep using more and more water, it would step up towards the higher and higher tiers. We're recommending that you start charging from the very first unit of water. So moving away of whatever the concept was in the past, and having, like most agencies out there, a fixed charge that recovers a portion of your fixed cost. And then people start to pay from unit one on. Because a lot of folks are not used to paying from that level on, we tried to phase it in over a few years. So it would start, you know, at $3, then it would ramp up to $6 in that first tier. And the other tiers would kind of ramp up as well until what you see at the end of the line, which is a lot higher than what you currently have, a fixed charge of $32, double what you currently have, plus people would be paying from the very first unit. I will mention, this is a big impact, particularly percentage-wise, for folks at the low end, because they're not used to paying very much for the water service charges under the current rate structure. But they still get a tremendous benefit under the proposed rate structure. They're still paying the same disproportionately low fixed charge that doesn't recover your fixed costs. And they're getting to buy most of their water in the lowest tier. So it's a higher percentage increase on low-use customers, but it's also a smaller dollar increase than what higher-use customers would pay. And this is, this table shows the projected rate impacts for a number of different levels of use here. Here, it shows what the current bill is and what the bill would be as these rates phase in. So a customer with three units would see their bill go from $16.43 up to $50 over the next five years. It's a big increase. But at the end of the day, part of the increase is because their current rates are extremely low. It's just the reality of the situation. A typical customer, as I'm saying, about six units of water would see their bill go from about $33.20 up to $75. So a little more than doubling over the next few years, five years. So these are not insignificant rate increases. And the high-use customers would see their bills go up as well. And you can see that the impacts are And you can see that the impacts are greater in dollar terms as you move up usage levels. But I just wanted to point that out because it was brought up. Hey, how come it's a higher percentage rate increase for someone using one unit than someone using 10 units? And that's because they're starting to have, they're getting, because the people at one unit right now are getting a tremendous break. As I mentioned, they still get a break with the new rate structure. It's just not as much of a break as what they're currently getting. So this is what it looks like when you put it in perspective for a typical home using six units of water. If you were to look back to '95, '96, no rate increases. Here's the, the bills with the proposed rate increases, assuming nobody cuts back in water use. This is someone who continues to use six units. It's a big increase, but over the long term, it equates to the 1995 rate plus about 3.5% inflation, which is right on target with, you know, inflation, probably on the low side for water and wastewater agencies. So bad news when you look at it short-term, but over the long term, may be a little more palatable for folks, I don't know. So that kind of covers the rates. There's a few side issues. And these rates were weighed in on by the Public Works Advisory Board, who recommended them for council consideration. So they have been vetted through a couple of meetings. And folks did get into some, some interesting details with that in the meetings and offline as well. But there are a few other rate issues that the Public Works Advisory Board didn't necessarily have 100% consensus on and, and wanted to defer to council's input on. So I just want to walk through those because this would need to be, if we, we need to know what the, what council would like to do for this stuff when you send out your Prop 218 notices, because that's going to have to be included. One is the notion of a pass-through for state water project costs. A few years ago, the state adopted a new law that allows water and wastewater agencies to pass through costs for wholesale service. What you need to do is in your Prop 218 notice, describe how that pass-through would take place. And then when the pass-through is going to take place, let's say someone's wholesale water rates are going up 50%, they would have to send notice to the customers 30 days before the pass-through could be implemented. So it's just a way of agencies, you know, being able to pass through costs for which they don't know. State water contract costs, again, over 50%, roughly 50% of your total annual costs for the sewer, for the water enterprise. Interestingly, most of those costs are fixed costs. And a lot of this cost with the Bay Delta Conservation Plan might not be hitting you within the next five years. So do you need to do something like this in the next five years? Maybe, maybe not. But my general tendency is to recommend agencies to do the little extra things that serve as insurance in case something does occur. So you could put in your Prop 218 notice that if the state water contract costs were to increase more than 5% per year, you'd have the authority with council approval to pass through those rate increases. You might not need it for the next few years, but who knows what's going to happen in year four or five. So as one of the, the PWEB members mentioned, it's kind of an insurance policy there. The next is a surcharge for D-cell operations. You currently use your D-cell on a very limited basis to treat high-nitrate water from some of your, I think it's the Choro, the Choro wells. But you're getting most of your water from the state water contract. So we didn't assume that you're getting all your water from the state water project and running the D-cell full steam ahead. There may be cases where you have a service interruption from the state water project, in which case you'd have to turn to D-cell. Unfortunately, it doesn't mean your bill is going to go down for the state water contract costs. Because again, a huge percentage of that is a fixed cost. Only very little is variable, is a variable component. So you could be in a situation, if you had to run D-cell, where you still have to pay half your money to the state water contract and you have to pay high operating costs for D-cell supply. So in cases like that, we were recommending that in the Prop 218 notice, again, you give yourself authorization for when that D-cell facility is needed, if and when it's needed, that you could have a surcharge to recover strictly the incremental cost of operation for that facility during periods of, could be, you know, inter, temporary shutdown of your state water project water. I don't know what's going to happen. So again, probably not something that's going to be needed, but it kind of an insurance policy. So you wouldn't have to go back out with a Prop 218 process if you did have to do something like that. The other option is you can just burn through your fund reserves and cross your fingers that the service outage is temporary. If you did something like this, I always recommend agencies include an inflationary adjustment, because your operating costs are going to be increasing in future years. The third kind of insurance thing that you could add to your, your Prop 218 process is the notion of an emergency water shortage rate. Call it a surcharge or whatever. This would occur if your water sales were, had to plummet for some reason. If there's some kind of emergency water shortage, you have to implement your water shortage contingency plan. If it's only stage one, two, or three, you're probably fine because you've got a diversity of supply and stuff. You've got more supply than what you need. But if you get to the higher levels of emergency water shortage contingency, where people have to cut back 40, 50%, again, you still have to pay the state their full share. But with that huge cutback in water sales, it's going to take a big bite out of your revenues. So you're going to be in the hole. So the notion of these water shortage emergency rates is that it would allow you in times of, you know, big cutbacks in water sales, that you can raise your rates to compensate for that revenue loss, not generating any extra money, but just bring yourself back to financially even. So those were three things for, for your input in addition to the rates. Do you want me to move on to the sewer? The sewer side is a little better picture. You guys have done a good job raising rates. You've raised rates every year for the last, I don't know, 15, 20 years. You've been doing 5% rate increases in recent years. The good news is because of those rate increases, your sewer rates actually generate, after paying your operating costs, about a million a year that could be used for capital projects and other things. So that's real good. So your, your sewer, your water was underwater. Your sewer is overwater by a bit. However, there is a deficit anticipated for this year, just so you know, because you're doing some deferred treatment plant projects and also moving ahead with some costs for the new wastewater reclamation facility. So you're starting from a stronger place, but you're facing a, a higher obstacle, a new $75 million water reclamation plant. Your share at the end of the day may only be, you know, 70 to 75% of, depending on how the cost-sharing works with Cayucos, whether they're a customer or a partner in this, they're going to be paying for about 25% of it. So your $75 million maybe equates only to $60 million. But that's a really big number for a community this size. Here is the long-term history of the rates. The green line shows, you know, you've been doing rate increases every year. You had a bump up back in 2008 to help set the stage for, for some of the projects that you're going to be embarking on. But the good news is, is that you've been raising rates. So you start from a better place. Here's how you compare to other communities out there for the sewer bill for a typical single-family home. You're kind of right in the middle of the pack. But other agencies that have had to go through new treatment plants, things like what you're facing, are seeing a lot higher rates. I'm thinking of like Los Osos, right around the corner from you. So again, that, this is a huge, a huge hurdle to face with a $75 million facility. The way the costs are modeled into our projections, there's about 10 million of preliminary costs that need to happen through the end of 2016, '17. Environmental, planning, design, initial design-build stuff. Then you wouldn't start construction until about 2018, '19, after going through, I guess is going to be potentially a design-build contract award with the plant operational roughly five years down the line. The plan is that this would be funded by state revolving fund loans. State revolving fund loan program is currently less than 2% for a 30-year financing. Currently, I think it's about 1.6%, somewhere in that range. So it's really a tremendous financing program. And the other nice thing about state revolving fund loan is the first debt service payment is not due till a year after the project is awarded and completed. So if the project's not going to be completed for five years, if you can get state revolving fund loan financing, you don't have to make that first debt payment until year six. However, they don't commit to giving you the money until you have the rates in place to secure the payback with all that debt service. But the good news is it allows, gives you time to phase in your rates over the next five years. So what we were looking at doing is phasing in rates, you know, pretty steadily. A little, tiny bit more in the early, first year, but pretty steadily over the next five years. So at the end of the line, you'll have enough money to fund operations and debt service. But because you don't have to pay that debt service in years, you know, three, four, and five, and you're raising rate increases, rates each of those years, you're going to be generating extra cash each, cash each year, which is going to enable you to cash fund some of your near-term capital projects as opposed to having to take on additional debt. So I see that as a good thing. In the long run, it's going to, you know, you're going to phase in the rates maybe quicker than you, you could have if you issued additional debt. But in the long run, it's going to result in lower rates than the alternative. In terms of your capital needs, you do have an aging system. The, the capital program identified about 10 million for sewer system needs within the next 10 years. Again, a lot of that is front-loaded. A lot of it is rehabbing old aging facilities. I know you've got a Main Street plan that's, I think, a few million dollars. There's some other pipeline needs and some rehab. On top of that, the city's done a good job deferring capital needs at the existing plant with the understanding that you're going to be moving over to a new plant. However, you still have to meet your permit requirements. Some of these projects have been deferred with the hopes that the new plant would come online before they were ever needed. But it does not appear that you could put them off that long because you still need to meet permit stuff. So there are about 2.3 million of projects, not an insignificant amount, layered in over the next few years for improvements that have to happen to your existing treatment plant, which is unfortunate, but it's just the reality. And again, cost inflation, you always have to keep the rates moving in the right direction. So again, we came up with 10-year cash flow projections based on the current budget plus 4% cost escalation. We assumed that the treatment plant would be funded by a state revolving fund loan. I think there's a good indication that you can get a state revolving fund loan. The funding's usually pretty easy to get. The funding is there and they've got a lot of financing capacity, even if they don't have enough funds in the bank right now. However, it's not a done deal. There's always the possibility that they, their program would, something would go wrong with it and you'd be forced to go to the typical bond market to borrow money, in which case the costs would be higher and the rates would look worse than what we're showing. If you had to do that, we didn't build a contingency for that in the rates. We could, but I think you'd have to come back to the drawing board if a few years down the line. But I don't see any reason why you wouldn't get a state revolving fund loan. They're not that hard to get. And you've got the kind of, the perfect kind of project that would be eligible for something like that. We also assumed that because you have to front-load a lot of these costs for design and preliminary planning, state revolving home loans typically don't give you any money till after the project has been awarded. And then you submit your first invoice and try to recoup all your soft costs. Well, it's okay if your soft costs are a million dollars, but you're talking about 10 million of preliminary costs. The nice thing is they do have a program, planning loans, that will fund the soft costs on an interim basis. And then when you get the long-term construction loan, they'll roll that, the, the planning loan into the long-term loan. So that is the plan. That's the hope. I think there's a reasonable, good odds that you would be able to get something like that. But again, nothing's ever 100% guaranteed until they sign the paper and give you the funds. Also, as I mentioned, we're assuming Cayucos is contributing 25% to those treatment plant costs. Whether they're a customer or whether they're a partner, you're going to have some kind of payment arrangement worked out where they're going to be paying their share, as well as everybody else in your system. So here's the sewer enterprise, kind of a graphic of the expense projections. Again, the blue is your operating costs gradually increasing. Your wastewater treatment plant costs, we assume, would gradually increase as well. And we didn't assume there was any higher operating cost at the new plant than the existing plant. The hope is maybe the operating cost could even be lower, but no one's quite sure of that at this stage. The yellow is really what's hitting you. That's the state revolving fund loan for your share of the $75 million project. Again, you don't have to start paying that debt service till the year after the project is complete. However, you do have to set aside one year of cash reserves in the year before you finish the project. So it kind of bumps back the date that you really need to make that debt service payment. And that comes right out of your reserves. They don't fund the reserve fund for you. And as I mentioned, because you're, you're phasing rates and towards that debt service is generating a lot of funding for capital projects. And the orange shows that you could really handle a lot of pay-as-you-go projects over the next few years. So the bad news is rates need to go up substantially. We're looking at a rate increase for a single-family home going from a little over $45 to about $83 per month. But I was surprised that people thought that was good news. I think people's initial thoughts were rates had to more than double. So maybe this is good news for some people. Again, we phased it in, a little bit bigger increase in year one, just a tiny bit, but it's mostly phased in over a few years. I think I already showed you that slide. This is where you're starting with. You can imagine your rate for a single-family home going to $83 would put you at a much higher level than where you currently are. But a lot of these other agencies are also looking at the need for rate increases in upcoming years. No, you won't be the lowest out there, but you certainly won't be the highest either. In terms of your rate structure, just a few observations there. One is on the residential side over here. You have a, kind of a fixed residential charge for all dwelling units of $45.59 per month. The odd thing is that that includes the first 10 units of water use, or I guess sewer discharge. And anything over that, people have to pay a higher charge. Well, that allowance, single-family homes get 10 units. Condos only get three units. There may have been some rationale, I don't know what it is in the past, looking at like kind of water use data. I'm not sure what it is. But the thing that kind of struck me was normally, we think of anything over 10 units from a single-family home as not being sewer discharge, but being outdoor landscape irrigation. It's rare you see a home, you know, would be putting 20 units. If they use 20 units of water, I could guarantee you probably 10 of that's going outside. So it's weird that there'd be surcharges as opposed to what we see agencies sometimes do is put a cap on the sewer charge at 10 units, 12 units, 15 units. The other side of the coin is that you've got a whole bunch of different specific non-residential commercial classes. And they've all got different rates. But when you boil it down, I color-coded it here, there's really only five rate classes that you have. You know, from low strength, domestic strength, you know, moderate, high, you know, leading up to high strength. Commercial pay all variable charges. It's a charge per unit based on metered water use, which is a very common way to do it. But they're subject to a minimum charge of $51.77, which is higher than what a typical home has to pay. So there seemed to be a little bit of a disparity there. So I'll just bump on, what we were recommending is just some minor tweaks to your current rate structure where this is practically a fixed charge, but it's got these, you know, overage charges that people have to pay. We were just recommending moving forward with fixed residential charges for all your residential customers. However, in recognition of the fact that condos and multifamily apartments do put less discharge into the system, we came up with a reduced charge for them, set at 80% of the single-family rate. I've kind of surveyed agencies around California, not just folks I'm working for, but also looking at the, the State Water Resources Control Board. Used to do a survey every year and they'd get a few hundred responses. And when I've looked through it, it's about two-thirds to three-quarters of agencies have fixed residential charges. And probably about a third of those, to a half of those, have reduced charges for multifamily apartments, things like that. The other, you know, a lot of them still have just a flat charge for all residential units. And then probably about 25% of agencies out there have some sort of variable rate component on their sewer charges. Typically, that's based on winter water use. For a community like this, that might not make much sense because you've got a lot of vacation homes. If you base it on winter water use, a lot of those homes may be vacant in the winter, but, you know, highly used in the summer. So we did look at that, brought that as kind of conceptual basis to the, the Public Works Advisory Board. And their consensus was just to stick with flat residential rates. Don't move to kind of a fixed hybrid side. So fixed charges for residential, multifamily, at 80% of single-family, with no additional surcharges. On the non-residential side, we're recommending keep your, you know, volumetric charges. But boiling down those, you know, that, that big list of customers into just five rate classes, which is, you know, commensurate with what you currently have. There's a couple of customers that seem to be in the wrong rate class where your current rate structure was. I mean, so this is just a small tweak. And we were recommending also Uh, and we were recommending also, set the minimum charge for the commercial rates equal to the charge for the multifamily residential. So there's some kind of parity on the minimum level. So this slide here shows a breakdown of what the proposed rates are, and you'd see the residential rates for a single-family home from a little over 45, go to 55, then up, you know, gradually up to $83. That's a $37 and change increase over five years. That's a lot, but you're facing a, you know, a new 75 million facility. Multifamily would see a little bit of, less of a break, going from 45 to 66, a little over $20 increase. We re, excuse me, we redid all the cost allocations for the commercial rates, so there's kind of a ground-up derivation to make sure all the rates for all customers are based on the same underlying costs for wastewater flow and strength. And this is what the rates came out to look like. The low strength would see their, their rates go up to 677, up to high strength, oops, going up to 1140. High-strength customers would see rates going up from, you know, 13 to 22. It didn't work out that they all went up by the same percentage. It seemed like they were more going up by the same dollar amount on the commercial side. But these are very big increases. People are probably, will not be happy with the rate increases once you put them out there with your Prop 218 process, so I would expect some pushback. And the other thing I was going to say, there's a million ways of doing rates. No matter what you do, someone could look at it from one perspective and say, hey, no fair. We don't like that your multifamily rates, only 80% of single-family, they should pay the same amount as a single-family because the variable costs of treatment are pretty minimal. You know, who knows what people come up with, but you're going to probably be hearing a lot of it from residential and commercial customers. But at the end of the day, um, I think the rates that are being proposed are reasonable, are defensible, are in line with industry standards out there. It's just that no matter what you do, you know, equity's a matter of perspective. And no matter what you do, someone could look at it as scans. And we had someone come to the last Public Works Advisory Board meeting and say, hey, wait a minute, I've got six apartments, but there's only one person in each, they hardly use any water, why do they have to pay six times the sewer charge of the home across the street that's got 11 people in it? And you think, yeah, that, well, that kind of makes sense. Are we doing it wrong? No. Charging per residential dwelling unit is a completely legitimate way to do it. In fact, it's the way that it's done in most agencies in California. And you can imagine if you went to a variable rate, then that single-family home with 11 people across the street would turn around and say, well, wait a minute, why am I paying, you know, as much as those six separate units? Cost of treating wastewater, you know, the, the extra wastewater I'm putting in the system, it's only costing you an extra dollar a month. I shouldn't have to be paying a lot more than an apartment across the street because a lot of the costs for wastewater are fixed costs. The infrastructure, the staffing, you know, that's most of your cost. The costs for electricity and chemicals are pretty, pretty minimal at the end of the day. So just expect to hear a lot of people unhappy with things. You know, if it was just a rate structure change, a little, some tweaks, okay. If it was just a rate increase, it was moderate, okay, but you're doing a big rate increase and some modifications to the rate structure. So I would expect you'll, you'll hear a lot. Oops, let me keep going this way. So again, this just shows what the rates look like. There are, just on the water side, a couple of issues we wanted to bring up on the sewer side as well. One is when we were, initially, we're talking to the city about this, and just the sheer dollar volume of what you have to do on the wastewater side for an agency that only serves, you know, a little over 5,000 customers, 75 million, is an exorbitant amount. So we're thinking, maybe you could pull some of those costs off the monthly bills that people pay and instead collect them on the property tax rolls. There are a lot of agencies out there that collect sewer charges on the tax rolls. Typically, they do that because they're not sending out a, a monthly water bill like Atascadero. They don't do the water, they do sewer only, so instead of doing monthly billing, considering it's a flat rate, they just, you know, put it on the property tax rolls and collect it twice a year and avoid all the billing costs. So you're not going to avoid any billing costs by doing this since you're still sending out water bills, but it would be a way, if you wanted to go down this path, of pulling some costs out of the monthly bill and putting it onto the tax roll. Uh, in some cases, it might mean a little different person paying the bill, if it's a property owner versus a tenant. Property owners typically write these costs off on their taxes so they can think they're getting a little bit of a discount. Legally, you're not supposed to do that, but I think everyone in California does. So this is just an option, just kind of a policy option for consideration. And the second thing was the, the Public Works Advisory Board liked the notion of implementing some sort of a low-income discount. Just based on working with a lot of agencies out there, I personally estimate about 25% of California agencies have some form of a low-income discount. You know, it could be 10%, 20% of the bill. It really ranges all over the map. The bottom line is you can't fund a low-income discount from other people's rates because that would mean they're subsidizing the low-income discount, which violates Prop 218. However, you can fund a low-income discount from alternative sources of funding, such as your general fund if you wanted to, but what some agencies do is use things like late fees and some of those other miscellaneous charges that, uh, that could be, could be a source of funding for a low-income discount. So the other thing is if you do a low-income discount, you don't want to be the ones verifying people's income. It's a lot easier to piggyback on another program that already does this. A very common one that agencies use is the PG&E Care Program, and I think I put in the report what those income levels were. Also, there's, you know, different federal assistance programs. Some agencies say, hey, if you qualify for one of those, bring us proof and we're going to give you our low-income discount too. You might not have a lot of money for a low-income discount, so you might not be able to offer a big low-income discount, uh, but even a token amount sometimes is appreciated by folks. Even, you know, a few bucks a month for someone who doesn't have, you know, a lot of excess cash can make a difference. So that kind of covers the water and sewer rate stuff. I know there's a lot of random stuff I kind of walked through pretty quickly there, but again, we're looking to get buy-in input. If you want anything changed, we're, we're happy to go back and, you know, look at some other alternatives, but we're hoping to get your input on the rates and also some of those alternative things that you might want to do in the Prop 218 process on water or on sewer. And I'll just say, yeah, the next steps we're looking at is, um, the, the plan was, and it doesn't have to go like this, but the plan was to get some input here, get council buy-in and get direction so that you can kind of roll out your Prop 218 process sometime in the next month. The way Prop 218 works, you have to mail notice of proposed rate increases to all property owners. You can mail them to tenants as well. Often, we recommend agencies mail to everyone for transparency and to cover your bases. After mailing the notices, you have to wait 45 days, then you can hold a public hearing, and at that public hearing, the rate increases are subject to majority protest. They're not subject to vote. It's just if more than 50% of parcels submit written protest opposing the rate increase, then you can't move forward with your rate increase. That has happened in your neighborhood before. I think Los Osos on one side and on Cambria on the other have had successful Prop 218 protests with organized opposition going door-to-door. I don't quite see the level of, um, public anger, at least yet, in our process here, or it's the kind of organized, but it really takes some kind of organized resistance to do something like that. And in your case, what we're hoping to put out there in the notice is explain what the situation is, why rates need to increase, and people here, if history shows, you guys have done your best to keep rates as low as possible as long as you can, so I don't think anyone should, should doubt the council's intention there. But the goal is that new rates would, would kick in July 1. And that concludes what I wanted to walk through and open it up for questions, discussion, whatever.
Thank you. Thanks for your presentation, as thorough as it is, and thanks for, um, working with our Public Works Advisory Board. Compliments to, to them and the, the folks that came out. At this point, we could turn it over to questions to everyone on council, and I will entertain public comment. Once again, I see the same folks out there, so I'm not sure if, whether or not they're interested in, in making a public comment following this presentation. Um, you know, I will note, considering all the work that's transpired, the, the, um, the gravity of the rate increase, uh, you know, the, the amount of public, um, participation we have at this meeting, so, uh, I'm hoping that the message is out there and people understand what's going on, otherwise that there's not some sort of surprise that might create some angst during this 218 process, but it's, it's been, uh, it's been well done, and I do compliment our Public Works Advisory Board on, on, um, working hard on this and then, um, make sure, making sure that we do, um, put out as much information to the folks as we can. So at this point, I could turn it over for questions, and Noah, would you like to start off with any questions on this?
Sure.
And I'll come back through and then to the other side?
Yeah, a couple of quick questions. One was at one of the Public Works Advisory Board hearings, a member of the public brought up this idea of developing a plan that, um, once the wastewater treatment plant's moved to factor in revenue from the redevelopment of that site to offset costs in the rates directly. I just wanted, there wasn't a lot of specific discussion to that question, and I wanted to put that back out there as, as a concept for staff to, to look at and respond to, whether it's tonight or in the future. That's one question. The other was, um, very simply, uh, there was also discussion about the water system master plan needing, um, serious updating as well, and, um, is that included in that list of projects in this next five year? And when would you anticipate that work to begin?
The list of projects is, um, based on incremental updates to our water system master plan as we've looked at it at staff. I would, we're planning on issuing an RFP this year for water system master plan updates, but those projects would be incorporated in the next water system master plan also.
Okay, so that would lay the foundation for the entire project list. Okay. And, um, do you have any comments at this point about the offsetting revenue from redevelopment?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take that one. Just, just initially, we'd be sort of betting on something that we have no idea what we're going to get or when we're going to get it. Um, and so I, I would recommend, this is just initial thought, an alternative method, that is instead of limiting this Prop 218 process and potentially shortchanging ourself, if we don't see the amount of revenue that we hope to get in year seven, eight, or nine, after we successfully redevelop and do something, we could certainly be in position to not raise rates later on down. So what we're asking, where the Prop 218 gives us the authority to raise rates, but there's nothing that says if that we have increased revenue from the Atascadero Road plot, when it's redeveloped at some point, we could choose not to implement a three-year CPI increase in years 10, 11, and 12. Might be a wiser way to do that than to, than to place a bet on something that we just don't know how much it's going to cost to redevelop it and what the, what the, uh, the potential revenue is. And remember, that, that decision doesn't get made only in this room, the Coastal Commission gets a vote.
Yeah, absolutely. I just wanted to make sure that we responded to at some point. Those are my questions. Thanks.
Can I make one quick comment about, real brief? The Prop 218 sets the maximum rates that you can implement over the next five years, so, you know, you don't, I agree 100%. You, you don't want to factor in some hypothetical future funding source that may or may not be there, but if you did get this money in year three or four unexpectedly, you always could opt to implement a lower rate.
Thank you. How about you, John? Thanks.
Uh, thank you for a very informative presentation. Very much appreciated, and, um, just a, um, a couple of questions, maybe for context that would include staff as well. I'm, um, wondering from either a policy standpoint or a discussion standpoint, historically, um, over the last 20-plus years, um, what, what prevented us or what was the rationale for basically not touching rates, just historically? And I, and I know that's not directly related to you, our presenter, but that may be a staff question that has been burning in my mind, and I'm just curious as to...
It's been burning in my mind as well for all of four and a half months I've been here, so, uh, so I don't want to speculate. I'll, I'll let Rob take a shot, who's, uh, who's been around for a bit longer. I could speculate.
It's a difficult decision to look at increasing costs to the public. Um, I know, um, Rick Deschler, who's in the audience, made a comment that when he was on Public Works Advisory Board, uh, they made a recommendation to city council to look at rates, um, a few years ago, and it was really not considered. This is really something that we, you know, been bringing to council over the past, I can't say every year, for the last 20 years, but, uh, quite regularly to have a discussion on, and this is our, our best, um, attempt at moving forward with rates. So I think it's a difficult decision for people to make to increase rates, and, um, as Alex talked about, in the early 2000s, we retired a, a big debt, our, um, uh, decal plant debt that we had in our water fund that allowed us to kind of live off those a little bit higher revenues, and now it's kind of come back home to haunt us a little bit, uh, not looking at rates. But, um, I don't know the exact reason why, other, why, other than it is a, a difficult process going through the rate-setting process.
I, I will just comment, so as we bring to you in your next two years as this council and in years ahead, um, Alex's slide there that essentially showed that had we increased rates gradually over the last 20 years, we wouldn't have to be doubling them in the next five years. And, uh, and so in many things in the city, although it is, it is uncomfortable, challenging to, uh, to, um, keep up with the, uh, the price of inflation, um, that's something that I, I will regularly ask you to do so that we don't find ourself in a situation like this in the future. And it, it's sort of akin also to, uh, putting money in the bank for capital replacement. We, we find ourselves having very, very little capital replacement in the, uh, in our, in our bank. There's very little in our budget, although in the budget process in the next couple of months, I, I'll be asking you to, let's at least start putting some of our revenue into a pot called capital replacement, so when we have to replace, um, this building at some point, we can do that.
And, and the reason for the question wasn't necessarily to bring embarrassment to the past and decision-makers in the past, but it really is to avoid the same type of issue happening in the future. And so the genesis of my question really moves to, um, is there, what, what opportunities or abilities do we have as a council to either set policy and/or develop resolutions or whatever you may want to call it that's appropriate to prevent this from happening in the future? And that would be a major concern that I have, so, um, I'll lay that out first before I move to the next question.
Continue on that.
That's, uh, Alex, that's...
No. Rob?
Okay. Um, there's a, there's a couple ways where we look at revenues versus costs. One is every year with a budget. Now, a lot of years, we don't spend a lot of time on the enterprise funds to, uh, look at their, their budgets, and perhaps, um, uh, maybe beginning this year, we spend a little bit more time on the, the millions of dollars that we're spending in our, our city budget. So that would be one. The other, um, cities have policies set by resolution for periodic rate reviews, so every three years, every five years, um, would be something that the council could do, but remember, it is a resolution, um, it can be changed by any council, um, so it doesn't guarantee things from now until forever, but it does set a standard. We don't overturn a lot of resolutions. In other words, uh, they continue to, to move forward, because if they were a good idea at one point in time, they probably still are, um, a good idea to move forward with. So I think those are the two methods to look at rates. One year, every, every year we look at the budget, or if we move to biannual budgets, every two years we would look at the, the budget, and we can look at a detailed expenditure basis then, and then do a rate review periodically. And we can look at a detailed expenditure basis then, and then do a rate review periodically based on council policy.
Great, thank you. Because the lost opportunity cost calculation, if I'm sure it's been done, is significant if I look at it. In terms of understanding public finance versus private finance, it's my understanding that there's an assumption in public finance that enterprise entities should stand alone and fund themselves with regard to the budget on an annual basis, and that is through rates. Is that correct? Okay, good. So I'm just trying to repeat things to make sure I understand it. Okay. So my question for you, sir, thank you again for a great presentation, is this. If we were to continue to be out of compliance with the bond covenant with the state, what kinds of damages could there be for us? And what kinds of liabilities and/or issues could we face as a city?
Yeah, that's a very good question. About a third of the work we do is actually financing. Our firm is an municipal financial advisory firm, so we do bonds and bank loans and all these things. If you never needed to borrow any money and you're out of compliance, there's certainly a lot of agencies that haven't even known they've had these debt service coverage covenants, so they're out of compliance. Theoretically, I mean, the lenders can come in, the trustees can force you to raise your rates. That's a real rarity. But I think where it would really hit you is when you wanted to go out and borrow some additional funds. And they would say, well, wait a minute, you haven't even been following the covenants that you signed on to for borrowing that other money. So that's where I see it could hit you. But there are many agencies that have failed to meet their covenants. It's called technical default. You haven't, you're always making your bill payments. That's the most important thing. But it could come back to bite you in something like that. And that's why I think it's important to get back in compliance, say, hey, we acknowledged, you know, we may have missed some covenants there, we didn't raise rates for a number of years, but we've taken proactive action to get back on track, and we're going to make sure we stay there. So it could hurt you in future borrowings.
And for the sake of time, we've got a few more questions over here. I was just wondering if we can, if we can just move it along, considering we only have about 12 minutes left, and we have to get to direction at the end of this.
Sure, absolutely. I'll make this just my last question. Is there any opportunity for rate recovery for lost opportunity costs over those past 20 years? And if so, what might be the considerations, other than obviously increasing the rates going forward in comparison to what you've presented today? Thank you.
Yeah, I think there's no looking backwards to try to recoup this.
Thanks, John.
The good news is people have been able to keep the money in their pocket. So, yeah, it'll be difficult to try to go back.
How about you, Matt?
Yeah, and for the sake of time, because we're running out of it, I do have a question. In terms of this Prop 218, it's going to be a tough sell to put on a Prop 218. Is there anything that you would suggest or from city staff in terms of the PR mechanism that we would go out and put this into the public's domain?
I'll start on that, on the strategic communications side. Our city column in the Bay News, three weeks ago, started the strategic communications on this, identified that the past P-Web hearings were taking place, or study sessions that this one was, and put in perspective this issue that rates had not been increased for 20 years, and that we are going through a process to do so. I will likely do something very similar in the next four to six weeks, two to three articles, and link those back to some of these, to that slide right there, because that really tells the story. But for at least a significant part of the story. But so we will continue, at least from the staff's side, to put out clear factual information in all the venues that we have the opportunity to do so.
And one more question, real quick. In terms of your analysis of these rates and going forward, especially looking at the city getting possibly these new water meters in the coming years, doesn't, don't you think that this could unduly hurt low-income or fixed-income folks?
I won't say unduly hurt. I mean, at the end of the day, people have got to help fund their cost of service, and the way the rate structure is set up now, I mean, it gives a lot of benefit to those at the low end. And even what's being proposed still is giving, I would suggest, quite a benefit if you're a low user compared to a high user. But I think that's one of the concerns the P-Web had also, which is why they brought up this notion of a low-income discount to help. But at the end of the day, it just costs a lot to run water and sewer operations, and you've got to recover your cost of service. So you only have so much flexibility for not recovering costs from folks. Yeah.
Thanks. Christine?
Thanks. I just have two really quick questions, and they're both about the low income. But I'm just wondering, council-wise, I'm looking at the clock, and there are things that we do want to discuss. Are we able to take another 20 minutes or so and get that covered, then we're finished? Because I feel like we are going to want to spend some time on discussion.
Yeah, I think so, too. And I think for the sake of procedure, as I look to our city attorney and city manager, we may have to just adjourn, reopen the regular meeting, and then go to that step? Or would we delay the 6 o'clock regular scheduled meeting to get through this process here?
You aren't legally required to open at 6:00, but if you want to and do what you said, you certainly can. But you don't need to.
Okay. Then as people come in, we at least let to, need to acknowledge what's going on here at the 6:00. I'll take, you know, at least make that notice. We can go on and see if we can just sum this thing up in the next 20 minutes. So that'll put us about 10 minutes after 6:00, then we get to through discussion. Thank you.
Okay, great. Really quickly, on the low income that we are concerned about locally, do we have anyone who's doing a low-income policy right now? Maybe Los Osos or Cambria? Does anybody know?
I think Los Osos has it on one of the utility bills, but not the other. I don't think Cambria, or maybe it's Cambria, one of them has it on like their water, but not the sewer.
Okay. And that's another question. Would we do it on both, or would we do it on one? Or how does that, if you're going to do low-income, how do you?
You know, there's a wide-open range of what you would want to do, but you could have it just on the utility bill, maybe it could be a few bucks on each.
Okay.
I think most of your water sewers are, they're both the same water and sewer customers. But I think some of this stuff would have to be, could be fleshed out in pretty short order.
Okay, great. And the other question is, are there any, in your experience or on the staff's side here, does anyone have a system where you're paying it forward? For example, if there are residents who can make their bills without an issue, are they able to, you know, like we do sometimes, pay it forward at the grocery store or pay an extra dollar? Would that be an ability that we could create here, where someone could say, you know, I can afford two more dollars on my monthly bill, and that would go into a separate fund for supporting some low-income offset?
Yes, any kind of voluntary payment for that, you're entitled to do in your billing. There's not a lot of agencies do that, but every blue moon, I run across one that has like a box you check off, or a couple extra bucks, or something like that.
Okay. Which just seems people are familiar with that, and it doesn't seem like a big deal at the time to say, sure, one more dollar on my end is helping someone else. Okay, great. Those are my questions, so I'm ready to go into discussion, but I know you haven't had a chance, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Christine. I just have one question, for the sake of time as well. When we were talking about when our state water, when we shut down our state water and we go into D-SAL, and we're still responsible for those payments, and there's a timeline of about seven years when that's going to expire. So my question is, when, if we renegotiate that contract, would the language in that contract change to the point where, when we're not receiving state water, will we still be under the same obligations? My understanding was our contract may be a little bit unique, and if we were re-crafting that contract, maybe we wouldn't have the same kind of obligations.
I think that's an opportunity that we could look at, but realistically, we have to look to who we're negotiating with, the state of California that wants to recover all of their costs all of the time.
I understand. I just was under the thought that there are some other agencies out there that didn't quite have the same contract that we do.
Nope, nobody in the Central Coast that serve water by the Central California Water Authority has any really different costs for that.
All right, thank you. And then I just would like to echo some of the comments on, as far as policy goes. And with that, that might go into discussion right now. So, Rob, thanks for meeting with me today. I had some very similar questions in regard to policy. And first of all, I think for the sake of discussion and council, we have to at least affirm that we're going to move forward on this rate study. We also have to move forward with a recommendation on what type of structure that was, and we've been, we have a recommendation to go to that alternative tier structure by our Public Works Advisory Board, is the recommendation?
Oh, yes. That is the one, yeah. We've kind of already eliminated the first one, it's just a minor tweak, but that's the one we're...
Those are the two recommendations, as far as direction from council. And then the third one was to bring options for pass-through costs. And so that would be something, when we come back, this council should be giving direction to staff on how we want to come back with that at a later date. So those are the notes that I have, and I think those are three things that this council needs to consider and confirm, if that's the way we want to move forward. And then lastly, I'll just have one more thing for discussion, and that is policy. And real briefly, whether or not this comes back at the next one, but shared very, very similar conversations on policy in regard to enterprise funds that ensure that revenues meet expenses. And whether or not we develop that during this next budget process or through this process that we're going through, I think we need to come back with that. And I would look to, you know, Dave, as far as whether or not we need to re-agendize that, or if we can come back with something at the next meeting when we're looking just specifically for water. There's probably the other opportunity for other enterprise funds, but I agree that we need to look at some sort of policy and mechanism for council and staff and our community in how we had handled that. And those are the discussion points. But I would just lead with council at this point. We need to, the recommendation is to move forward with the rate study. Recommend to go with the alternate tier structures is the recommendation we received, and if we get concurrence from council. And then also to consider bringing back options for pass-through costs at the next meeting.
And just to be clear, the alternative tier structure was the one that was presented tonight. We didn't present the one that was not present, that...
Correct.
P-Web did not recommend. And I think we would like to get some indication from council, your direction on those path through costs, whether we, you know, are going to consider those on the Prop 218. You know, if we need to drop them now, you know, we should know now so that we don't develop some of the Prop 218 materials that consider those. So if there's any that we, you know that you want to drop, I think we'd rather hear it sooner rather than later would be better.
So from the rest of council, then, if we're good on the first two, and we're getting into the discussion of the pass-through costs, that might be the direction that we can get into discussion, and then we can start. And I would look towards my left, and then Mr. Buckingham.
Let me just, also on the, would love a little bit of additional direction on the low-income subsidy. And so just to frame this again, I think the council's probably tracking, but for the public, the enterprise funds may not subsidize within that fund. It's illegal. So you can't simply charge one person a lower rate than the other within those enterprise funds. You really have three options. One is a subsidy from the general fund, so just dedicate general fund money to subsidize rates into, for a specific group of people into that enterprise fund. The second is some other funding mechanisms, such as using late fees within that enterprise fund, since those are fees and not payments. That's, that we can look at that also. And I'll tell you, I love the idea of a checkbox on the water bill. It would be, since we're in tax season, we could do something that looks a whole lot like, do you want to donate $2 to the federal presidential campaign? This would say, donate $2 to a low-income thing, and I'd feel a lot better about that than donate anything to the presidential campaign, frankly. So that is a way that we could do that, and we have a precedent of doing that to help fund the Fourth of July here in Mora Bay. We could have that on every water bill, and if we go to automated water bills, it'd be even easier.
Great input. So first of all, do we have consensus from everybody on the first two directions, as far as move forward with the rate study and recommend the alternative tier structure? Do we have consensus? We can just get that over with, and then get into the pass-through costs for discussion? And can I get consensus on that?
So you're asking consensus for the way the water rates were presented and for the way the sewer rates were presented? Is that what you mean?
Exactly. And to move forward on the rate study, to come back with the Prop 218?
Okay. Yes.
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 Noah? Yes, okay, so we're good on that. And I just want to reconfirm with staff, is there any other details to that, that part of direction?
Not on the rates themselves. We'll be bringing that forward in, to address the Prop 218 process.
Okay. And just for the sake of clarity here, it is the 6 o'clock hour for our viewers and for the folks that have just come in for our regular city council meeting. We're just concluding our study session that has to do with our water and sewer rate study. We're going to continue this discussion, hopefully for the next 10, maybe 15 minutes, and then we're going to pick up into our regular city council meeting. Apologize for delaying the regular city council meeting, but we do want to conclude this, and we're going to continue on with this. So we're going to move on to discussion on the pass-through costs. And Rob, can you just lead us off on these pass-through costs and what are options for that for discussion?
So the pass-through costs, I think they're up on the slide now. They are the increases in the state water project beyond what we've assumed as a kind of an inflationary increase. So we have built into the rates a 5% increase. This is beyond that. This is for the big governor project. Probably unlikely that'll happen during the rate period, but it would be an insurance policy. The other one is kind of the low water supply rate, so that when we're not being able to be served by state water and have to run our D-SAL plant, but we still have to pay the state water costs, that we have a surcharge when we run our D-SAL plant. And then the third cost up there is water shortage, so that when we go to emergency water supply measures, so council sets numeric standards for the total amount of water somebody can use. You can only use 10 gallons per, this is exaggeration, 10 gallons per person per day. We can still recover the costs that we need to continue the water fund to be solvent.
Okay, great. Noah, you want to kick us off on discussion on this?
Sure, I do. I sat in on both the P-Web hearings and heard their recommendations, and on these, they actually deferred this decision to us, which is okay. I think, my thoughts, the water shortage rate charge for emergency situations, I think, makes sense. I would want to make sure that there is very strong emergency language about the implementation of such a surcharge, so that would not be abused in the future. So I'm comfortable with that, with the, within the designation of very strict language about how that could be utilized. The D-SAL operation surcharge, I think, makes absolute sense, knowing we have to pay the cost of state water regardless of whether we get that water, and very likely, and it's already happened multiple times, we have to operate with our D-SAL to get by. And ultimately, the desalination system's going to likely replace a large component of state water in the future. So I'm comfortable with that. The third, the state water pass-through, I'm absolutely not in favor of that. I think that's a much bigger debate and discussion that the community needs to have. I understand that we would save some money, say, if we wrote that in now, we wouldn't have to go back to a 218 in the future on that. But that's a $25 million investment potentially, or even more, and it warrants further community debate, not something that we should write into this one as something that could be written off without that debate. So I'm in favor of the first two, but not the state water pass-through.
Thanks, Noah. John?
In the interest of time, I will agree with Noah on his item number one and item number two. However, I will not agree with the 5% state issue. I think the increase that we're about to undertake is surprisingly much... I think the increase that we're about to undertake is surprisingly much lower than many of us anticipated, that's the rhetoric I hear in the community. And I think a cushion, especially given the fact that rates in the future most likely are going to go up, and we don't know what's going to happen with the state fund with the building of our new plant, may turn around and bite us. And so, any opportunity for a minor cushion, I think, is important. Thank you.
So, just to be clear, so the surcharge for the D-SAL, and the water shortage you're, you agree with, and the pass-through of the state water, it's, Noah said no, you're in favor of.
I see, yes.
Okay, just want to make sure, thank you. Christine? I'm sorry.
I'll let Matt go, it's okay, no, seriously, I always, no, no.
Sure?
Yes, I'm sure, it's okay.
Wow, you're upsetting this guy. Wow. Okay. I am also in favor of the water shortage cover charge. I also agree with Noah in terms of the strong language we have to put in there, because there is a slippery slope there, that if we don't put that in there to guard against. And also, I'm in favor of the D-SAL surcharge cost, because that goes back to what we were talking about, in terms of the, the water rate structure moving forward. Because if, if in those years that we have very low water usage, we're going to see significant rises in, in monthly costs, and people are going to have to know about that. Then also, I'm very wary about the pass-through with state water, looking in the next 15, 20 years at our water. If we can move away from, from using state water, I would be in favor of that, and so I'm not in favor of doing the pass-through.
Thank you, Christine.
Okay, thanks. First of all, I also want to appreciate everyone who's on the Public Works Advisory Board, I think that we all said it, but I want to take the time, just a few seconds to say it. I watched the two meetings on DVD, and they spent so much time digging into what we saw this evening, and they did a great job, and they're, I've really, think, if you take a look at who they are, they're across the board, they really represent everyone here in terms of, you know, what stage of their life they're in, what can they afford to pay, you know, their age even is just spread out, gender-wise, they're actually much more balanced than this board is, I'm happy to just say. But they did an extreme amount of work, those meetings were two hours plus, every time they looked at the report, and I appreciate so much of what they did, enabled me to come to this meeting with a completely different sense of, of what we needed to accomplish, because they had done so much work. And thank you also, Alec, for reflecting those changes into this report, it's only been really a month that you've been working on it, and I just want to appreciate the work they did, was very thorough, and we're really fortunate, and so is everyone in the community. Fortunate that those folks took the time to do it, do what they did. So then, getting back to what we're, we're deciding to do tonight, I am interested, just to reiterate about the policy changes that we need to make, moving forward, so that we don't fall into this trap again. John, thank you for bringing out the issue you did about why we're here and how we got here, it's very unpleasant, but this is where we are, it is the reality, I think these are reasonable changes to make. I would say that in the next five to 10 years, we are going to be looking at our rates very carefully, and more frequently, because of the projects we have moving forward. So, maybe, you know, the, the policy like this is a little bit, maybe it's not as urgent today, but it may be urgent in 10 or 15 years, and I think the more we can institute a policy for a review, an automatic review every three years, or two years, or whatever, that we're setting, that we're setting the future up here, because we're going to look at these rates in the next five years, we're going to come back and have to look at rates again. So our community's going to be engaged, and thank you, Alec, for the 10-year view, so, so rare, really, we've been able to see a long-term view, and we appreciate that when we get it. So thanks for that. So obviously, we're, we're coming back, but I think we need to institute those policy changes now, if we can, while it's fresh in our minds, and while we're, we're the council that's sitting here without having raised water rates in 20 years, and how that feels for the five of us up here doesn't feel great. So let's put some policy in place as soon as we can, so that future councils, hopefully, don't, aren't in the same position that we're in. So, just wanted to really, really hit that home. About the three issues, on the water side, the pass-through, you know, I'm going to be on the fence on the pass-through, if we don't have to make a definite decision about that tonight, I'd like to talk about that a little bit more, on the automatic, automatic pass-through for state water. I am, though, absolutely sure that the water shortage emergency rates may be necessary, and again, this is something that we may never implement, so that's important to keep that in mind, this may not ever come to pass, but considering where we sit in this current drought, it's wise to consider that, I agree, the language should be strong, though, so it's not abused, and people feel secure in that. And lastly, it is not widely known in this community, that when we have to start up our D-SAL facility, it's cost us an incredible amount of money. People have said, from the very beginning, when, last year, I heard frequently, when our state water was really threatened, and we weren't sure what we were going to get, people said, "Well, we'll just start the D-SAL plant." But they didn't, but, you know, really, the reality is starting that, that's right. If we are permitted to do so, we can do so, but the cost, it basically doubles than our cost. So, unless we have this built in, then we're not going to be able to recover the cost. So those are the, how I stand on those, and I am more than willing to look at a variety of low-income solutions, it would be great to hear what our local communities are doing, but definitely a pay-it-forward fund. I'm a little hesitant to say, "Let's take it out of the general fund," because I know the pressure on the general fund. I'd rather see us do something a little bit more creative if we could, taking it from fees seems to be wise, and if it's something that's legally allowable, then I would go for that, but also, this pay-it-forward idea might work for us. Thanks a lot, sorry, it was a little speedy, I appreciate, but like, great conversation, everybody, thanks.
Thank you. So I, I got you, is, you agree on the D-SAL and the water shortage, but you're not sure about the pass-through for state water?
That's correct.
Okay. Just for the sake of time, I, I agree with the surcharge for the D-SAL and the water shortage, and I agree with John on the pass-through for state water, so I, I would be in favor of moving forward on that, as far as the pass-through costs, which leaves us to basically make an determination whether or not we're just going to go ahead and move forward on the first two, or excuse me, the surcharge for the D-SAL and the water shore, water shortage surcharge. You know, Christine, you were a little bit on the fence, so it might be up to you on whether or not you want to make that call.
Do we have to decide right now?
I think, well, Rob-
We, we could-
We can bring that language.
I thought, yeah, maybe a little bit.
This is clear enough guidance, I think we could bring the language to you for, at the decision point, and you can choose it or not, is that right, Alex?
Mr. Mayor-
Wait, Alex is going to contradict me.
No, not going to, no. That's one way of doing it, another way, I was going to say, is, you really don't take action on any of this stuff till the Prop 2, the public rate hearing, so you could include it in your notice, if you were kind of on the fence in it, and decide yea or nay at that stage, as opposed to trying to come up with something now, and then deciding to go through the notice. So if you're comfortable putting in the notice, you can always opt not to do it.
One more, we have clarification from our city attorney, might help us?
I want to make sure that I'm understanding correctly, and hopefully you will, too. The pass-through process that would be approved is not the actual implementation of what the amount would be, the increase, it's just to allow you the opportunity to do it, without having to go through another Prop 218 process.
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
Okay. Noah, you had a, you had a motion?
Yeah, I do have a motion, I think it captures it, and I think it'll get unanimous support. I'd move that we direct staff to develop Prop 218 initiation program, as presented and recommended tonight by Public Works Advisory Board and our staff, and that you return to a public hearing with the council, with the proposal and details, including a public outreach and education program, options and recommendations for a low-income program based on alternative funding models, options for, or more detail for the state's water pass-through program, the water shortage rate surcharge with strict emergency criteria language, and D-SAL operational, operation surcharge, and a policy option to ensure responsible future rate reviews.
I have a second.
Motion by Noah, great motion, a second by Christine, and any discussion? Just, I have one question on the policy option for, can you just elaborate a little bit more on your, your comments for the policy option?
Yes, I was to hit exactly on what you and council member Hedy were talking about, to make sure that future councils are trigger encouraging more periodic rate reviews, so we don't get into the situation of avoiding it for 20 years.
Okay. And I guess my other question would be, for staff, you know, is it worthwhile just bringing that back as a future agenda item? Will that be adequate to, to provide this in the motion?
I, I think that's adequate to me, I know what-
Okay.
-you, you just said.
All right, good. So with that, all discussions complete, all in favor say aye? Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries, 5-0, great, great work. Folks, we're running a little bit behind, because we're completing our water rate and study, and with that, are there any concluding remarks from staff on this? Are we okay with everything? Good to go? We will adjourn, at this point, we'll adjourn our special meeting, we'll take a five-minute recess, and we'll conclude our regular city council meeting at 6:20.